We had important business before the Finance Committee this morning that took a little bit longer to address, which is fine doing the people's business. And so with that, at this hour, I call the meeting of August 13, 2022, of the DuPage County Board to order. May I ask, please, Mr. Sam Tornatori, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And please remain standing for our invocation.
My life is a testament to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I invite Pastor Sue Allen to join us up here at the podium that will, who will lead us in invocation. Pastor Allen is from the Living Lord Lutheran Church in Bartlett, I believe.
I know we're all running a little late today, so indulge me for a moment. Would you all just kind of shrug your shoulders up to your ears and then relax them down? Take a deep breath. Slowly let it out. Gracious God, we stand here as leaders in this community, and we ask that at this time you dispel all the tensions that are here and held. We ask that you would open our hearts as well as our ears, so that we may listen with wisdom and understanding, that decisions may be made for the best interests of all, and that we may be leaders who serve. We pray this today in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Chad Pierce, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Covert.
Here.
Member Desart.
Here.
Member DeCiani.
Here.
Member Ekoff.
Here.
Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart.
Here.
Member Krajewski.
Here.
Member LaPlante.
Here.
Member Ozog. (snaps fingers) Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Here.
Member Schwartzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori.
Here.
And Member Zay.
Please add Mr. DeCiani and Ms., uh, Member Ozog to the roll.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum. Um, so on the Order of Chairman's Report. Hello, 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 hello. Uh, thank you, you solved that. Um, it's very volatile, a lot of volume, so I'll step back. So yeah, so we, um, on the Order of Chairman's Report, um, first and foremost, with leave of the body, um, I ask that we move item 8C of the agenda today. I want to, um, I want to address our appointment for District 5. We have Judge Popejoy at the ready. As you know, August 16th was the last day of service for District 5 Board Member Amy Chavez, who relocated to another state last month. I'm really grateful to those dedicated District 5 residents who applied to fill Member Chavez's seat for the remainder of her term, which expires in early December. From those applicants, and after considerable amount of deliberation, um, I have the responsibility to make a choice and make a decision, and I chose Amy Phillips to fill the vacancy that was created by Member Chavez's departure. Per my email to you, um, from Friday, you've had a chance to review Ms. Phillips's resume and qualifications, and at this time, I'm going to ask Vice Chair Ashley Selman if you could please introduce item 8C on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move on CBR 375-22, resolution. Second. Appointment of Amy Phillips as a member of DuPage County Board for District 5, Chavez vacancy.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Pachalski.
Aye.
Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
And Member Schwartzy.
Okay, unanimous. Congratulations, Amy Phillips. Not only congratulations, but thank you for your willingness to serve. Really appreciate it. May I invite Ms. Phillips and Chief Judge Kenneth Popejoy to the podium so that Ms. Phillips may be sworn in and take her seat?
We finally meet. (laughter) Is this operating? Yes, it is. Okay. I'm very honored to be here today and to fulfill my duties as Chief Judge in swearing in one of our public officials, our new county board member. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Amy Phillips.
Aye, Amy Phillips.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of county board member.
To the office of county board member.
For District 5.
For District 5.
On September 13th, 2022.
On September 13th, 2022.
In DuPage County, Illinois.
In DuPage County, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the member of county board.
Of the member of the county board.
According to the best of my vote.
According to the best of my vote.
Congratulations. (applause) Chair.
Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Okay, as Amy finds her seat, um, just wanted to offer a couple of pieces of information, as I may, if I may please. As to the matter of committee assignments, Member Phillips will assume all of Member Chavez's committee assignments. Uh, makes sense, logical, simpler, uh, including serving on the Economic Development Committee representing District 5. However, for continuity's sake, I ask Member Ashley Selman to continue leading the Economic Development Committee in her capacity as Vice Chair of the Committee for the remaining three committee meetings this year. Um, finally, I have a brief update on the situation in Burr Ridge, where 76 people seeking political asylum are staying in a local DuPage Hotel. Uh, while the situation was quite unclear at first, a regional operations center has been established through which information and requests for assistance will flow. Uh, this regional response center includes all parties involved, including DuPage County, uh, which has staff at the table. Uh, as we are told, all of those staying at the Burr Ridge Hotel have been granted a status as asylum seekers. Uh, our DuPage County Health Department and Community Services staff are responding to specific requests concerning the health and welfare of these individuals. Uh, we are tracking these requests and coordinating with the state, Cook County, and the city as part of a regional response. I've asked that our departments keep me informed, and we will continue to assist as we are able until the involvement of our DuPage County Hotel has ended. And then, uh, one other item, um... I think we have a presentation? Yeah. Okay. So, uh, I'd like to, uh, call on our representatives from Marsh McLennan to the podium to make a brief presentation. Each time, at this time each year, we, we do hear from our representatives, uh, from our, uh, insurance brokers, um, and who provide important employee benefit information as we plan for the new fiscal period that begins December 1st. The analysts at the agency have reviewed the DuPage County data related to our health, dental, vision, and other benefit plans, and they've come today to present their findings and recommendations. We thought this was important not only for the board, but all the employees and those who would be tuning in, and they can always access this information if they so need. Um, I'm also, at this point in time, if I may please, uh, I'm going to turn the gavel over to, uh, to, uh, Ashley Selman, our Vice Chair, who will then preside over the remainder of the balance of the meeting. So with that, uh, sir, please, from Marsh McLennan, please proceed, and, and Ashley, come on up.
Normally, people leave the room after I've already begun talking, so this is, uh, the usual turn of events, but nonetheless. Uh, good morning, everybody. My name is Chris Boucher. I'm with Marsh McLennan, and our firm is proud to serve as the county's Employee Benefits Advisor. And while I'm only provided the opportunity to visit with the county board, but once or twice each year, I assure you, there are ongoing conversations throughout the year as it relates to the county's health plan and its performance, and I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge members of the county's Internal Healthcare Work Group team who have supported those discussions over the better part of 2022. So we have Marguerite Ewing and her Human Resource Team. We have Nick Kotmeyer, Jeff Martinovich, who I, there he is. Uh, and we also have, from the county board, uh, Ms. Chaplin, Ms. Selman, and Mr. Zay. Thank you for your support and your contributions over the course of this year. And as we prepared for today's conversation, I was given, uh, three relatively explicit instructions from the Internal Healthcare Work Group. They said, Chris, we would like you to be bright, we would like you to be brief, and then we would like you to be gone, and so I'll do my best to do just that here this morning. And so the focus of the conversation is the county's 2023 Employee Benefits Renewal. When last we met in October of 2021, uh, at that point in time in 2021, the county's self-funded health plan was performing very well. We had a favorable variance to budget of 2.1%. We were $410,000 under budget. Along with that budget, we brought to you a projection for the 2022 plan year. You can see that down at the bottom of the page. We were looking at an increase for 2022 of 1.6%, $382,000. That was the projected adjustment. Based on the minimal adjustment that was projected and based on the county's focus on employee retention and recruitment, it was resolved that no changes would be introduced for the 2022 plan year and that the county would absorb the projected cost increase. If we jump to the next slide. So I mentioned earlier that, uh, in October of 2021, we had a year-to-date plan performance of roughly 2.1% under budget. How did the rest of the year, uh, play out? Well, it played out very well. You can see that we wrapped the 2022 plan, excuse me, the 2021 plan year with a favorable variance of 3.3%, $1.1 million under budget. That's a great result. You can see the distribution of that result came from, across multiple lines of coverage, whether it be the medical, which was nearly 3%, $900,000 under budget, or the dental program, which was roughly 12% under budget. So how are we doing thus far in 2022? Let's take a look at the next slide. So through July, uh, we've had a turn of fortunes. Uh, we are seven months into the plan year, 5.8% for both the medical and dental combined over budget. That is an unfavorable variance of 1.0, nearly $2 million. Now, if you look at the composition of the variance over in the far right column, you'll notice that the HMO plan, which contains roughly 86% of the county's medical plan enrollment, 9.2% over budget, $1.4 million. But the PPO plan, 2.6% below budget. Now, we've had a lot of discussions within this particular, uh, session with regard to HMO versus PPO, which is the better fit for the county. And so while the HMO is, uh, over budget and the PPO is under budget, if you look at the bottom of the exhibit, we have a table which illustrates the actual cost per employee per month for each of those programs. And you'll notice that the PPO plan, in spite of being under budget year-to-date, is significantly higher than that of the HMO, uh, per employee per month cost, which is over budget. So just wanted to tuck in that illustration, uh, in the event that that conversation comes up again. If we go to the next slide. And so, uh, you've heard some numbers thrown at you here. Uh, I mentioned 3.3% under budget in 2021, year-to-date. Through July, we're at 5.8% over budget. Uh, how does it all stack up? And so what we're illustrating on, uh, Slide 5 is the year-over-year planned performance for the county's self-funded medical program dating back to 2017. And when you think about year-over-year performance, you often look at it in the context of aggregate costs. What are the total costs year-over-year? But for healthcare purposes, that's really not a fair illustration because your enrollment, it shifts. It's higher, it's lower from one year to the next. And so the easiest way to, to draw the comparison apples to apples is to take the aggregate cost and to distill it into a per employee per year, uh, number, and that's what we've done here on Slide 5. So the way that this exhibit sets up, on the far left, we've got 2017, and that's the per employee per year cost. At the top is the gross cost, so 12,535. In green is the employee share of the cost, and in blue is the county's share of the cost in each year. And then, if you're trying to do the math as to what that distribution of the cost, employee versus employer is, don't bother, we've done it for you. That's the pie charts that are elevated over each of the bar charts. And you can see that the distribution in 2017 was 80% of the cost absorbed by the county, 20% by the county employees. And incidentally, where we are today, even over budget on the far right-hand side, it's also an 80/20 split. But how do you measure this? If you look at this just with your eyes and you look at the trajectory of the healthcare spend using the arrows, you'll see that it's not flat, but it's also not terribly elevated. Uh, this is really good planned performance. And if we had to put a metric by it, which we have in the bottom-left corner, we would use, uh, a CAGR metric, compound annual growth rate. And what this tells us is, what is the average cost increase per year over this five-year period that we're reviewing? And you can see that, on average, down in the bottom-left corner, the gross cost for the medical plan increased by 2.7% each year over this five-year review period, 2017 through 2021, and the county's employer net spend is increased, on average, per year 2.1%. That's really solid performance, very solid performance. But we have this outlier on the far-right-hand side, that's our 2022 year-to-date numbers. Now, that, that story has not fully been written. We're only seven months into the plan year, and the fortunes can change in any given month. But, so that is, in fact, just an outlier and more to come. But when you see these numbers, sure, 2.1% on average being the, the county's employer net cost increase, that's, sounds pretty good, but how does this compare to other organizations? And so if we drop to the next slide, we'll show you that comparison. So what we've done here on Slide 6 is, in green print, we've reposted the gross costs that were on the prior slide. We have added to the exhibit the, uh, large employer benchmarks for all employers nationally. Large employer in this regard is those with over 500 employees. So regardless of industry, public, private, this is all employers, and that's in blue. In yellow, we have added in large county governments. So these are national county governments, large, over 500 employees. And just using your eyes, you can see that the county's planned performance over the year compares very, very well versus other employers, regardless of industry, and even better when you isolate just counties. If we go to the next slide. So we've talked about the past, we've talked about the current state, our year-to-date planned performance. What do we see for the future? So for 2023, across all lines of coverage, so this is inclusive of the medical, the pharmacy, the dental division, the life insurance program, all lines of coverage, we are looking at the county's employer net cost going from 24.3 million to 26.6 million. That's an adjustment of 2.3 million dollars or 9.3%. This budget projection for 2023 assumes that we make absolutely no changes. Like last year, we maintain the current employee contributions, we hold the plan designs into 2023 as they are in 2022. I'll also note at the bottom that earlier this year, uh, your Marsh team took the, uh, the county's medical program out to, out to market. We invited, uh, Aetna, Cigna, United Healthcare to bid on your program. Uh, in spite of the fact that none of the three, uh, bidding carriers were competitive, we used the process to put, to put some, uh, pressure and some leverage on your in-force relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois, and it worked. We, uh, received $150,000 administrative fee or retention credit, which will be available to us in 2023, and it will repeat itself in 2024 and 2025. So over three years, $450,000 came of that effort. If we ju, uh, jump to the next slide. So a 2.3% ni, uh, 2.3 million, 9.3% increase, where is it coming from? So on Slide 8, this is a, a ledger and accounting of the county's medical programs, excuse me, all of the employee benefit programs. So down the left-hand side, we have each of the lines of coverage. Each line of coverage is broken out by the total or the gross cost, the county's net cost, and then the employee share of the cost. You can see the medical, the dental division. Um, when we look at the numeric columns, on the left-hand side is the 2022 budget that we are tracking against. To its right is our 2023 projection, again, absent of changes. And then in the bottom-right corner, you can see, there it is, 2.3 million plus 9.3%. But if you look at the two columns on the far right, you can see that the only column that has an adjustment is the medical program. Chris, how did we get there? How did we get to an employer net cost increase on the medical of 9.5%, 2.25 million dollars? Well, I'd like to show you. So if we go to the next slide, the county's medical program is self-funded, and what that means is that you pay the claims if and when they come in. It's not a fully insured product. We're not paying Blue Cross Blue Shield a set amount every single month. We pay the claims on an if-come basis. When we build out our projection, your Marsh team is doing the underwriting. We're looking at 24 months of historical claims, and we're using those claims as a litmus test as to what our future will look like. So we take the, the historical claims, and in this regard, it's July 2020 through June of 2022. We trend those claims into the future because we know the cost of healthcare increases each and every year. The cost of an office visit this year is going to be something more next year. We've got new medications that are entering the market. We've got new ways of performing hip and knee replacement surgery. They are more effective, but they are more expensive, and we need to account for it. So we take your historical claims, we trend them into the future. You can see for the HMO, medical trended at 5.1%, pharmacy at 8.2. We have to account for the fixed cost increase from the Blues, who are processing those claims. We've accounted for that. And then we also have to include your stop loss. Stop loss is an overarching protection over the plan, which caps the risk for the county for any one particular member at an amount. That amount for the HMO plan is $230,000. So once a participant in any one plan year has $230,000 of paid claims, the risk thereafter becomes the responsibility of Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois. For the PPO plan, that stop-loss threshold is $75,000. And so we assume that those thresholds will continue. And so down at the very bottom, you can see the adjustment on the HMO, 7%. The adjustment on the PPO, 9.2%. Chris, I think I'm getting it, but help me understand, why are we looking at an increase of over 9%? Well, let's go to the next slide. So I mentioned earlier that when we're doing your underwriting, we're looking at 24 months of claims, and here they are for the HMO program. There's a lot happening on this exhibit, let me talk you through some of the high-level details. So we have your employee enrollment for the HMO plan broken out by coverage here, employee, employee plus spouse, and so on and so forth. We have the actual paid claims, medical, separate from pharmacy. We've identified any stop-loss reimbursements that were received from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Illinois in any given month. So we take the medical, add the pharmacy, take out the stop-loss, and we get our net paid claims. We then take those net paid claims on this exhibit, and we divide it by the total enrollment. And that gets us the column on the far-right-hand side, which is net paid per employee per month. For illustrative purposes and to help you understand why we're looking at the increase we are, we've identified in the far-right-hand column in red print, the top 10, the worst 10 months, net paid per employee per month over the last 24 months. And when you look at this exhibit, what do you notice? 11 of the worst 12 months have been in the most recent 12. The reason that's important is because when we're doing our underwriting, we weight 70% emphasis on the most recent 12 months of claims and 30% emphasis on the historical 12 months. The last data point I'll share on this slide is in the bottom-right corner. What you can see there, that 19.2%, what that's telling you is that per employee per month, between the two 12-month experience periods, the most recent 12-month per employee per month claims are 19.2% higher. Now, why is that? Well, some of it's a derivative of the pandemic. In the pandemic, you can see those sort of early pandemic months, starting in July, claims were down quite dramatic. They were down quite dramatically. Why? Because we couldn't access our doctors. Nobody wanted to be in a hospital. We all postponed elective services. We delayed care. So that created a good situation for the county, but now it makes our claims of late look artificially high. We go through the exact same exercise on Slide 11, if we go to the next slide, which is looking at the PPO plan. What do you notice here? It's a different composition. Only four of the most recent, or of the, of the worst 12 months are in the most recent 12-month experience period. As a matter of fact, if you go all the way to the bottom-right corner, between the two 12-month experience periods, the claims for the PPO plan have actually decreased per employee per month by 1.5%. It's the stop-loss increase for the PPO plan that's driving the increase. I didn't point it out, but it's a 25% adjustment on the stop-loss for the PPO. That's ultimately what's driving that, uh, projection for 2023. So a lot of detail here. Uh, and one more slide before we start to look at cost-reduction solutions. If we go to Slide 12, uh, just for, food for thought, we had, um, with this board many, many years ago, uh, it actually was back in 2012, there was conversation around moving the cost split, the employee versus the employer share, to an 80/20 split. At that time, in 2012, the distribution of the cost was 85% being paid by the county, 15% being paid by the county employees. Benchmark at that time was 80/20, and we said, we need to get there. And so we set course in 2013 on a five-year strategy to get to 80/20, and that fifth year was 2017. And you can see, if you look at the pie chart, uh, on Slide 12, we did get there. But the numbers have bounced around since then. You can see that in 2018, 78/22, 2019, 79/21. The only thing I wanted to bring to your attention in this regard is that if we don't make any changes in 2023, we will still be at an 80/20 split. All right, if we go to the next slide. So we had presented to the Internal Healthcare Work Group a myriad of cost-reduction solutions. These are all, uh, captured in the addendum of the report that you've been distributed. We have whittled it down, though, to just two options that we wanted to submit for your consideration today. Uh, the first option concerns the county's HMO program. Again, 86% of the enrollment, uh, is in this plan. And this option proposes to change the primary care physician or PCP office visit co-pay from $20 to $25 per visit. If you look at the right-hand margin, you can see that the PCP co-pay, the median benchmark is $20 for HMO plans. So we're proposing to take it outside of benchmark. All right, it's also important to note that that's a 2021 benchmark. It is the most current national benchmark data available, but it is two years antiquated from when this change would go in. If this change were to be deployed, it would generate cost avoidance to the county of about $108,000. If we go to the next slide, the second consideration, um, goes back to the county's employee contributions. Uh, since 2017, since we arrived at that 80/20 split, employee contributions have only been increased once over the last five years, and that was in 2020. And you can see that exhibited on Slide 15. So only one employee contribution adjustment in the last five years. And I'll tell you, that's a very unusual headline. That's a very unusual headline. But what if, if we go to the next slide, we were to increase the employee contributions by 5%? Again, we're looking at a, an increase of over 9%. It's north of $2 million. What if- What if we increase the employee contributions for the first time in five years by 5%? If we were to do that, and we'll show you what those contributions look like on the next slide, we'd be looking at additional payroll contribution revenue to the county of roughly $321,000. And to make that real for you, if we slip to Slide 17, just to look at the numbers, and I know this is a bit of an eye chart, and I apologize. We have the 2022 employee contributions on the left. Actually, it's broken out the employer share of the cost, and then we have the employees' monthly contribution, broken out by plan option, HMO, PPO1, Blue Choice, and a Blue Edge HSA, and then by coverage tier, employee, all the way through employee plus family. We identify in the middle what the 2023 contributions would look like with that 5% adjustment. And then on the far right-hand side, we've identified what the monthly increase would be for the employees if this were to be moved into position. You can see for the HMO plan, again, that's the largest segment of your population. On the low side, it's $6.28 pre-tax per month increase. On the high side, $20.32. And then if we look at all three of the PPO plans, the increase, the highest increase comes out of the PPO1 plan. It's roughly $60 a month on the increase. On the low side, it would be $13.75. So, just to help root in that change, and the prospect of that change, on the far right-hand side, we have posted national benchmark data for HMO plans and then for PPO plans. You'll notice that if you compare the 2023 contributions as they would be if this change were to be adopted, the contributions are still lower than the market, actually quite significantly lower than the market, 2021 market, mind you. For the PPO plans, however, the contributions push further away from where the market's at. We're already outside, and we would be going even further. If we go to the next slide, last illustration, and again, this ties into the conversation around an 80/20 split. If alternative 13B, which is the contribution adjustment, were to be deployed, you can see that the county's split of the cost would be moved to 79/21. So, to pull it all together, on Slide 19, after a really strong 2021, a favorable variance to budget of $1.1 million in the 2022 plan year that is still being written, we are looking at for 2023, an increase of 2.3 million, 9.3% if no changes are taken. If the two changes that we proposed to you today are moved into play, that would reduce the county's increase to $1.8 million or 7.5%. So, I'll pause there, brace for impact, and your questions.
All right, I have Member Rutledge, Zay Pacholsky. We'll start there.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just curious, on the medical expenses, if you drill it down to medical versus mental health.
Yeah, we have looked at the medical versus mental health. Mental health, not unique to the county, across all of our clients, is an elevated cost care category. It is a problem. It's new, and we're learning how we can better address that through alternative programs, through the Blues and other vendors, but it is absolutely an area of concern.
And can you give us an idea of how much the increase was for us due to that?
I can. I don't have that data in front of me, but we certainly can arrive at that.
Thank you. Member Zay?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Chris, thank you. You know, I sat on this committee for a long time, and I want to thank Member Salmon, Member Chaplin for keeping me on this. I know we had discussions about this. I don't think a lot of people know, when we did have good years, we never returned that money to the general fund. We kept it because we're self-insured. We kept it in a separate fund for catastrophes, things like this, and I think this is one of the times that this committee thought that making no change with inflation going up, perceptions from staff, we just are giving, you know, pay increases out, and basically it would be eaten up by insurance costs. So, I think the committee came up with, I know you came up with a few of these, but making no change right now to it and going through it, I think, would be the best option, and that we do have money in that fund that would cover this. And I think we had money budgeted, so it's not as bad as you think. Nick said we had some money budgeted for this, so it's not as bad as the 2.2 million. It's a little less than that.
Just to make the decision to have all the data points, so, we anticipated this earlier in the year, so in the budget projections for '23, almost this entire increase has been incorporated already, so it's not really a surprise in a budgetary process. So, as you make your decision, keep that in mind. So, it's not, if you say no increases, we've incorporated that increase already.
Thank you, Nick. And again, I know we've been good to employees, and it's just, the times right now are tough out there, and it's just, to do this and then give increases and do it, you know, at some point, at some point, we're going to have to. We've talked about it, but I think right now is probably not the time to do it.
All right, thank you, Member Zay. Next up, I have Pacholsky, and then I see Kudjuski, and I believe I saw Tornatori too. Pacholsky?
You know, we had these meetings where we have cash reserves at all-time high, our sales tax is coming good, and I kind of think we ought to do the right thing and just eat this cost because we just gave our staff praises. We tell them how great they are and how much we appreciate it. We can afford to do it this year. It doesn't mean we can afford to do it every year, but I think we ought to do what we've done and just put this 428 and take it out of contingencies or some special fund so that employees don't have to pay an increase.
Thank you, Member Pacholsky. Member Kudjuski?
Thank you. I think I'm in agreement with the board members, but I think there was two proposals you had up there, one with the 25 co-pay, which is a little outside the norm, which I would be against, and that was $100,000. And then the other one was bumping up the 5% increase. We'd get to 79, 19. Again, I would be against that increase too, so I'm, is that what you guys are talking about?
The total loss for 428, I never considered it. It's not 79, 19.
Well, you've given us, you've given us a 9%, but you've given us a 9% increase, and then you've given us two alternatives? Is that the?
That's correct. So, the 9% is if we do nothing.
Right, right, right. I mean, I would, I'm not for either of those two, if that's what we're asking.
Well, it's for the board's consideration, yes.
I mean, which one have you given us? I mean, or we're giving you feedback on that?
We are proposing to introduce those two modifications, the PPO co-pay adjustment on the HMO.
Right, so you're proposing that, which I'd be against?
Yep, and that's...
Okay.
So, you're saying I'm not...
Yeah, not his proposal.
Our proposal, our proposal.
Thanks. All right.
All right, thank you, Member Kudjuski. Member Tornatori?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Perhaps I misunderstood, but I think you indicated earlier that there was only one year that the employee contribution went up. But wouldn't, because it was 80/20, wouldn't the employee, if the employee contribution went up, wouldn't the employer contribution go up correspondingly? So, it's a, it's still 80/20 no matter how you slice it, right?
Not necessarily. It is a very complex equation, the 80/20 split. There are a number of dependencies, the enrollment patterns of the participants, the coverage, so which plans they select, which coverage tiers they elect, employee-only, employee-plus-family. The actual performance of the plan does factor into the 80/20 equation. So, when I made the remark that the contributions have only increased once since 2017, that was with regard to the employee components.
Okay, but I'm, I'm still missing it. If it's 80/20 across the board, and it goes up a dollar for the employee, then it should go up $4 for the employer, right? That's 80/20.
Well, the 80/20 is not the constant. What has been the constant is the employees' cost over that five-year period. Those employee contributions, what they pay to participate in the health plan has been constant. Therefore, I think to your point, what has been adjusted over time is the employer, the county's share of the cost, and as a derivative of that, the 80/20 has been moving around. If you looked at the pie charts on Slide 5, you'll see that it does move around from 80/20, dating back to 2018 all the way through 2021.
Okay, so then, the second question is the medical prescription alternatives on Page 16, the increasing by 5%. That means going from 20 to 25% for employee contribution.
No. So, what that does is it takes the employee contribution dollars, so what they pay today, not the percentage that they pay, but the dollars that they pay, and elevates them by 5%.
So, 5% of their 20.
5% of whatever their costs are, yeah. It's not perfectly proportionate.
Okay, okay, all right, so, all right. And I'm also against any increases based on what happened recently with us. But thank you.
All right, thank you, Member Tornatori. Anyone else with questions or comments here? All right, if I could kind of summarize, it looks like the general consensus is we're not interested in either of those two alternatives, and we're going to absorb the costs like we had talked about in our committee. All right, thank you, Chris, so much.
Thank you. Good to see everyone.
All right, next on our agenda is public comment. According to our county board rules, members of the public shall be afforded time to address the board. Individual remarks shall not exceed three minutes in length, nor shall the total time provided for all remarks exceed 30 minutes. So, we're going to start with our folks who are in person. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. First up, we're going to, Steve Fixer?
September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, I guess, across the country and everything like that. So, what the DuPage County Veterans Suicide Prevention Coalition has done is that we've put together a Firearms Lethal Mean Safety Day here at the county. So, we're actually going to be outside in the main parking lot, and they got the sheriffs with me, my office, Heinz Hospital, NAMI Health Department, Vet Center, and now I'm getting more and more calls from organizations and some politicians that want to check it out or have a table or something. So, there, we're going to have tables outside in the parking lot, and we're going to hand out free gun locks, free information about gun safety, lethal mean safety, medication. We're going to take an old prescription medicine to dispose of and destroy and everything like that. And a lot of it's going to be information and everything like that on firearm safety and any other types of lethal mean safety or anything like that. It'll be Saturday, September 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Again, we're going to be outside at the main parking lot. We are, this is not a gun buyback day, okay? King County Sheriff did one, but this is not. No weapons, no guns or anything. Don't bring anything in. But it's us to hand out information, free gun locks to everybody, that you don't have to be a veteran or anything like that. This is open to the whole county and anybody who shows up. So, I do have some flyers here, if you want me to drop them off, and if you don't have any questions or anything.
We don't normally do questions during public comment. If we could do questions during old business?
Is it on his website?
Sure, that's, is it online, Steve?
If it isn't, I'm actually in the process of redoing the website. I think a lot of us are, but I'll put this on the website and everything like that.
Thank you.
If it's not, I've been working on that right now.
Steve, if you want to leave your flyers with Joan, she can make sure that we get them distributed.
I will put them right on the table right there.
Yep, awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions, I think you know how to get ahold of me, right?
Sounds good. All right, next up is Jan Shaw.
Does it drop a pen? Good morning. I think it's still morning. I'm Jan Shaw, resident of Wheaton. And for full disclosure, I'm also the vice chair of Illinois Conservative Union. We've been around about a decade. Part of our charter is to, things that we do, we look into election integrity, and we share, and we help the public understand what's going on. What I want to talk about today is ballot security. Not too long ago, we used to have absentee ballots. You had to have an excuse to get one, like being off in the military, off at college, couldn't get to the polls because of physical disability. Okay? And the process was pretty much handled by the full-time staff. Things really changed by 2020, when they promoted vote by mail to everybody. It was convenient. Everybody liked it. Over a third of the ballots in 2020 came in via vote by mail. In fact, in the 2022 primary that we just had, it was about 20% of them came in via vote by mail. What concerns me is I started asking questions. We had friends who put in some FOIA's and asked, how's the process work? Well, after 2020 election, when they asked, how's the process work of vote by mail, they got back pictures of the vote by mail envelopes, instructions for the user, and no such document exists for the processes that are documented, for chain of custody logs, et cetera. You add to that the fact that when they did discovery recount, they couldn't pull out the ballots from particular precincts because they were all sort of mixed in together, and they had no idea where anything was stored. Most states follow best practices, and while it may not be totally required by law, if you want people to have any faith in the vote by mail ballots, our county needs to change their processes for how they're stored. On Election Day, the ballots that have already been counted are placed in tamper-proof packaging with security seals and signed by every election judge that handled them, okay? Why aren't we doing the same for vote by mail? I got a chance once to talk to Pat Bond, who's the lawyer for that group. He says, why should we? It's not required by law. We put them in a locked cabinet. He said, anything like those locked cabinets we used to have when I worked at a big company, where if I forgot my keys, I could put a paper brad in, turn the lock, and the thing popped open? I have no idea how good that lock is, and even if it's perfect, if more than one person has a key, how do you know somebody didn't tamper with those things? This is where I'm coming from. We need to be able to ensure the public that vote by mail are properly being stored, that we have chain of custody documentation that says when they were picked up, when they were processed, you know, for checked for signature, for opening the ballots, for separating the ballot from the envelope. We need to know if they have to do a discovery recount, which packaging has the different precincts in it. They have to be able to find them. So, we need chain of custody. We need tamper-proof packaging. We need security seals. And you need to then put out a press release to the public saying that, hey, we are properly securing these ballots from the time they come into our possession until the time they're counted. Give the public a little bit of...
We've reached three minutes. If you could bring your remarks to a close, please?
What?
We've reached three minutes in your remarks. If you could bring them to a close, please?
I will. So, what I'm looking for is I would like our election authority to change, and the reason I'm speaking here, by the way, is because there is no meeting I can speak on for election authority. They don't have any. That's a problem, too. The election authority needs to secure all ballots using chain of custody, tamper-proof packaging, security seals, so that they can guarantee that the public, that from the time they came into their possession until the time they counted, that nobody had any chance to tamper. Right now, we make voting by mail easy but hard to secure. And that goes all the way back to the Carter Baker report, that they knew this was going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nancy Flannery, I believe.
Well, I'm back, and I'm the one Mr. Akoff mentioned, thanks for the shout-out during the Finance Committee, who FOIA'd a copy of the 2022 Election Judge Manual. Well, the timing was, I did receive a copy of the manual after the FOIA request, which is fine. You know, sometimes government needs a little help getting things done. And it's not bad. It's actually pretty good, but you'll notice all the little sticky things I have. Well, those are, those are issues that need to be corrected, and it's all kind of boring and technical, and if you're not an OCD judge, you know, you probably don't want to hear about it. But I will use one example, which ties into the lady who spoke just before me, and that is in regards to the vote by mail issue. If a voter requests a vote by mail ballot and they receive it, they do have the right to turn it in and vote on Election Day in person, and there's a process for that. And the process is they give the ballot with the envelope to the polling place judges, and then they're issued a paper ballot. Unfortunately, that isn't spelled out in the manual, and that's something that needs to be corrected because the point of the manual is that we all do the same thing. We're all concerned about election integrity, and I know we all want that. I know, I mean, you wouldn't be sitting here for hours talking if you didn't care about how government functions and serves the people. So, I will come back and let you know if we've corrected these things in the manual. I have been promised that a paper copy will be in each polling place vote box, you know, the equipment box, and I'm sure that that will happen. But I, you know, I know you, you have bigger things to deal with than something, which seems kind of trivial. But I, you know, I know you, you have bigger things to deal with than something, which seems kind of trivial. But people who are election judges, it's, it's hard work. And they want to do a good job, and they want to do an honest job. And a correct manual will help them do it. And I want to thank all of you, because I don't know how long it would have been before I got the manual if you guys hadn't been involved. So thank you very much.
Next up, Crystal Pace.
Good afternoon. I'm a licensed mental health clinician working over in the Correctional Center. And I'm speaking on behalf of our unit that includes mental health and nursing. We're here today hoping to share some of our struggle. It's been a little over four years negotiating a first contract for approximately twenty people. For nursing, there are at least a hundred and fifty hours a week that still need coverage after the regular schedule is made. The nurses struggle to make this work, and the burnout is present. And currently, there are no solutions in sight. For mental health staff, we are seeing a refusal, seeing a refusal to set any perimeters around the scheduling. The lack of perimeters has been abused in the past. And currently, we are in an unsustainable position where two people are required to cover the needs for the entire facility. Even fully staffed, we struggle to stay afloat, and with two people, it's become impossible. The nurses and mental health staff are all working long and stressful hours. The jail population has changed tremendously over the last twenty years. The medical and psychiatric acuity and the cognitive impairments due to the drug epidemic has significantly increased, making the needs that much greater. Yet, the staffing levels have remained the same since 2001. We see people at their absolute worst, nurses monitoring individuals through withdrawal, treating chronic medical issues, managing COVID, treating pregnant women, and so much more. The mental health staff's main responsibility is risk assessment and crisis management. We are the facility's primary defense against suicide. We all work daily to manage any risk and protect the facility from litigation. We have no relief, we have no backup, minimal to no wage increases over several years. Most days, we don't have time for breaks or meal periods. We have the, we have no work-life balance. We all come to work daily and have no idea when we'll be able to go home to our families. The open mental health positions are offering twenty-five dollars an hour, and for an hour on, it's twenty-nine. These wages make it almost impossible to attract quality and talented staff. Medical and mental health and corrections is a very specialized area of our profession. We are all here because we love what we do. We are dedicated to DuPage County, and we respect and appreciate the incredible staff of deputies, sergeants, and lieutenants that keep us safe and make it possible for us to do our job. But we are overworked and significantly underpaid, and we need some relief. On behalf of the medical and mental health unit, we are asking for your help to bring our first contract after four years to a close. A contract that is equitable in treatment, policy, scheduling, and wages.
Thank you. Next up, Cameron Day.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. It's always nice to see local government at work, there's nothing like it. So I appreciate everyone giving their time to their community, I really do appreciate that. My name is Cameron Day, I'm with the Assembly Council Thirty-One. We're a public sector union here in Illinois, represent state workers as well as a litany of workers here in DuPage County. We represent workers at the Care Center, we represent workers at the Probation Department under the Chief Judge, and we are in negotiations, year four of negotiations for our first contract for our jail mental health, or Correction Center, mental health workers and nurses. These are, this is a unit of about twenty folks that give everything they can to this county. These are people who have withstood the issues of the pandemic, being on the front lines throughout, and really are committed to this work. I stand up today to thank Crystal for the words that she just shared with you all, as well as Orlando's attendance today. As Crystal noted, she's a mental health professional, and Orlando works in the nursing department. They are two of the committed employees who have hung on despite the litany of challenges faced by the Correction Center in the past few years. These two employees represent some of the best here at DuPage County. They are an asset to your community. They have been at the table negotiating this contract for four years, four long years. I thank the Board for its participation in helping get more authority to your jail management team during our previous sessions. But as Crystal so eloquently explained, we still have some issues with scheduling and both recruiting and retaining staff. We all know that the labor market is extremely tight, and we know that the cost of living remains stubbornly high. We know, though, that it is in the best interest of both parties to have a contract that is reasonable, fair, and just, so our members can continue to provide the high level of service. As Crystal explained, our members are committed to helping improve outcomes. They take very seriously the role they play in fostering an environment of rehabilitation, so this county is a safe place to live. And our members want what's best for this county. And I know the Board wants those exact same things. So I look forward to our continued collaboration, and we appreciate the Board's support during this time. May DuPage County continue to be a wonderful community to work, play, and raise a family. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Jax West.
My name is Jax West, I live in Lyle. I am here to say thank you to the clerk and the clerk's office for all the work that she has done, especially the permanent vote by mail. I am an elected precinct committee person, and I know in talking to my precinct how much people really appreciate being able to register for their permanent vote by mail. We don't know, especially with the November election, where we will be in COVID, what the weather will be like. So this is a, very beneficial to so many of our voters. And I just wanted to say thank you again to the clerk's office.
All right, that completes our in-person. We have some online comments submitted, and Evan will read those until either he's done or we hit thirty minutes.
Good morning, good afternoon, whatever it is. The first comment today is from Joseph Sheehan, subject is Cannabis Farm. Comment reads, "Dear Board Members, it is my understanding that the cannabis regulations will be drafted and presented at the Development Committee on September sixth. This will be over two months from the June twenty-eighth meeting where this matter was voted upon. All one hundred and eighty-five conditional dispensary licenses have now been issued by the state. I believe that I am the only person currently interested in developing a project in unincorporated DuPage. As such, I request that the regulations not require public comment, as that will further delay this process. Any further delays could result in the current, could result in the current license holders seeking other options. This would be catastrophic to my small business. I request that this delay be sped up to allow me to submit my project for approval without further delay so as to avail of the time-sensitive licensing. Kind regards, Dr. Joe Sheehan." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Dominica Ross, subject is appreciation of the care given at the Care Center. Comment reads, "Hello, my name is Dominica, and I live at the Care Center on Unit One North. I want to let you know that the care we receive every day is fabulous. The people who care for us are often asked to work double shifts, but never let it affect the care they give us. They are kind, caring, and giving an all with a smile. Their tasks are too many to list, all done with a laugh and a smile. My roommate Lucy and I are so grateful for the CNAs and nurses, along with the rest of the staff, who take such good care of us. They go above and beyond every single day. They are our family when our families cannot be with us. We hope that all of their efforts are recognized and appreciated by you, the County Board, as much as they are by us." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Juanita Marguettes, the subject is DuPage County Clerk. Comment reads, "The DuPage Clerk is scheduled to present her budget today. Although she has not shown up to a county board meeting in two years, she did find time to appear at her own fundraiser. This speaks volumes as to her priorities. I am curious to see if she will address her lack of attendance at the county board meetings. I'm also curious to see if she addresses what happened to the four million dollars in lost revenue to DuPage County. Four million dollars could have helped a lot of people. How is this revenue being addressed going forward? In the private sector, aka quote, real world, end quote, one is expected to show up to one's job. One is also held accountable. No accountability, no job. I implore the Board to hold the clerk accountable. Where has she been? Her inaction and lack of accountability is disrespectful not only to the County Board, it is disrespectful to the taxpayer. This is a job that pays one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year. November is around the corner. A person of character, a true public servant, would not be running for reelection." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Matt C., subject is Somewhere Over the Rainbow. Comment reads, "Although the DuPage Clerk hasn't shown up to a county board meeting in over two years, I recently observed her appear at her own fundraiser in a pair of sparkly red Wizard of Oz shoes. I'm hopeful that she appears in her Wizard of Oz shoes to present her budget today. Something tells me that her presentation will be like that of the Scarecrow, all hay, no brain. Her budget presentation might be like that of the Tin Man with no heart to address those she could have helped with the four million dollars she lost. But I think her budget presentation will be like that of the Cowardly Lion, too afraid to show up to work and do her job." That is the end of that comment. Next comment is from Steve Militello, subject is More Than Just a One Trick Pony. Comment reads, "The DuPage County Clerk often brags about her new bright and shiny voting machines as if that's all that's required from a clerk. Reality is, the position of county clerk requires so much more than just buying new machines. The office of county clerk consists of many moving parts. In fact, the DuPage Clerk must oversee the divisions of vital records, revenue, and elections. And in DuPage, the county clerk, quote, "shall," end quote, also appear at county board meetings. A failure to have done so in well over two years is likely to have been the reason behind the clerk's failure to meet a deadline, costing DuPage taxpayers up to four million dollars in lost revenue. All along, the clerk has been all about her shiny machines, while failing to realize that the job of county clerk is not easy. We don't want a one-trick pony, we want a clerk that's present, qualified, and accountable." That's the end of that comment, and that's the end of the submitted comments.
All right, thank you, Evan. Next up on our agenda are consent items. I'll take a motion to approve consent items A through K. All right, there's a motion and a second, and I'm going to read them here and to the record. A, DuPage County Board Regular Meeting Minutes, August twenty-third, 2022. B, Payment of Claims Eight, nineteen, twenty-two, Pay List. C, Payment of Claims Eight, twenty-three, twenty-two, Pay List. D, Payment of Claims Eight, twenty-six, twenty-two, Pay List. E, Payment of Claims Eight, thirty, twenty-two, Pay List. F, Payment of Claims Nine, two, twenty-two, Pay List. G, Wire Transfers Nine, eight, twenty-two, Wire Transfers. H, Consent Item County Clerk's Report of Reports and Disbursements for July of twenty-two. I, Consent Item County Clerk Report of Receipts and Disbursements for August twenty, twenty-two. J, Consent Items Treasurer's Monthly Report of Investments and Deposits, July twenty-two. And K, Consent Item Change Orders to Various Contracts as specified in the attached packet. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member DeSart. Member DiCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Runahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. And Member Tornatori.
All right, thank you. Next up is County Board, my stead, Members Zay, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on CBR three sixty-three dash twenty-two, the appointment of Richard A. Scuta to the Wheaton Mosquito Abatement District.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Members Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member DeSart. Member DiCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Runahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman.
Aye.
And Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, Members Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move on CBR three sixty-four twenty-two, the appointment of Stephanie Kaiser to the Naperville Fire Protection District.
Request for leave, leave is granted, and we've already completed item C. Thank you, Members Zay. Moving on to Finance, and Member Chaplin, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I move approval of FIR O three five one twenty-two, resolution acceptance appropriation of the tobacco enforcement program grant, amount of six thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars, Sheriff's Office.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert. Member DeSart. Member DiCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Runahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR O three five two twenty-two, a resolution additional appropriation for the federal law enforcement justice fund, nine hundred seventy-five dollars, Sheriff's Office.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of FIR O three five five twenty-two, resolution additional appropriation for the state drug traffic prevention fund, of fifteen thousand dollars.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR O three five nine twenty-two, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the HUD twenty twenty continuum of care program or planning grant agreement, the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR O six, O three six zero twenty-two, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the Illinois Department of Human Services Emergency Solutions Grant, Intergovernmental Chalk Agreement, the amount of fifty-four thousand four hundred forty-five dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR O three six seven twenty-two, resolution acceptance and appropriation of the Illinois Voter Registration Systems Grant, the amount of five hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR O three six eight twenty-two, acceptance and appropriation of the additional funding for the Help America Vote Act, polling place accessibility grant, in the amount of seven hundred forty-one dollars.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of FIR O three six nine twenty-two, resolution additional appropriation for the twenty sixteen Stormwater Bond Debt Service Fund, in the amount of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, and authorization to transfer one hundred ninety-seven thousand from the twenty sixteen Stormwater Bond Debt Service Fund to the Stormwater Management Fund for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR O three seven one twenty-two, resolution additional appropriation for the County Clerk's GIS Fund, in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred sixteen dollars. Oh, I have to make an amendment?
It must be amended.
So I'm going to amend the resolution to read, whereas the need for additional appropriation in the County Clerk's.
Member Chaplin?
Yes.
Sorry, we can do it easier, you can simply move to as amended in Finance.
Oh, oh, great. I will move to approve as amended in Finance.
Perfect. Leave is granted. Oh, okay, that's always an order, is, do we want discussion before that?
Yes.
Members Zay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we discuss this a lot in Finance, but I know our staff has said from time to time, we have to make this, make this additional appropriation, but we're doing it today because of the raises that the clerk gave, which she's entitled to do, anywhere from ten to forty percent she gave this time. So expediting this transfer was because of the raises that were given, as we were told by her deputy, Adam Johnson, that they're entitled to do per the Illinois Attorney General. So, but, and their statutory authority, well, it's our statutory authority to also do these budget transfers, or not do these budget transfers or appropriations. So I will not be voting for this. It just doesn't seem we've had the transparency we needed on these raises that we've asked for. And if we do not move forward on this, then they would have to get us that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Members Zay. I'm seeing Member Ozog and then Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I believe it was explained to us that part of this fourteen thousand dollars was related to overtime cost and staff increased usage, and we can also talk about the precinct maps, which was a considerable time commitment. So this is not strictly about the raises, and this is fourteen thousand dollars. Thank you, I will be voting yes.
Thank you, Member Chaplin.
Thank you. Historically, since two thousand six, the Finance Department has been preparing the budget for the GIS Fund for the Clerk's Office. Many years, every, I have a copy of a few resolutions right here. One from just earlier this year, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. One from January nineteen, where the GIS Fund, for whatever reason, is not, there is not enough money in the GIS Fund. Whether or not these salary increases were taking place, we would have had to make this transfer. So whether or not, again, I'm going to repeat that, whether or not these salary.
Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
No.
And member Zay.
No.
Nine, six, three, absent.
Nine, six.
Nine, six.
Okay, so confirming that item passes. Thank you, member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 037322, Resolution Allocation of ARPA Funds to Address Food and Security Within DuPage County, in the amount of $5 million.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. And member Tornatori.
All right, thank you. Next up is County Board. My stud, members A, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on CBR 363-22, the appointment of Richard A. Scuta to the Wheaton Mosquito Abatement District.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. And member Tornatori.
All right, thank you. Next up is County Board. My stud, members A, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on CBR 363-22, the appointment of Richard A. Scuta to the Wheaton Mosquito Abatement District.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. And member Tornatori.
All right, thank you. Next up is County Board. My stud, members A, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on CBR 363-22, the appointment of Richard A. Scuta to the Wheaton Mosquito Abatement District.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
No.
And member Zay.
No.
Nine, six, three, absent. Nine, six.
Nine, six.
Okay, so confirming that item passes. Thank you, member Chaplin.
Thank you. I move approval of FIR 037322, Resolution Allocation of ARPA Funds to Address Food and Security Within DuPage County, in the amount of $5 million.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schworzy. Member Selman. And member Tornatori.
All right, thank you. Next up is County Board. My stud, members A, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on CBR 363-22, the appointment of Richard A. Scuta to the Wheaton Mosquito Abatement District.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart. Member DeCiani. Member Ekoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips. Member Pachalski.
Longer under warranty, parts are hard to come by, including a shortage of batteries. So not only will this purchase benefit and protect our police officers and our firefighters, but will also save our municipalities and thus our taxpayers literally millions of dollars. So, well, with that being said, the state has stipulated, um, uh, certain entities are not, uh, they're not allowable for ETSB surcharge, including three, the three entities on today's agenda. But because interoperability is so important, um, the state's attorney's office, the office of homeland security and emergency management and sheriff's department regarding the jailers is certainly vital. So these IGAs will allow these entities to purchase the radios at the same price that we as ETSB was able to purchase, um, and really cutting the cost in half for what they would have to pay if they did not choose to use this. So, um, thank you for all your support on these, uh, on these resolutions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I would move to approve JPSR 0357-22, a resolution approving the DuPage County Sheriff's execution of an interregional agreement with the Emergency Telephone System Board to provide replacement radios for end-of-life end-of-support radios on the DuPage Emergency Dispatch Inter-Mobile Radio System.
Sir?
All right, there's been a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on.
Okay, then I don't, I'd move to approve JPSR 0358-22, a resolution approving the DuPage County State's Attorney's Office execution, execution of an integral agreement with the Emergency Telephone System Board to provide replacement radios for end-of-life end-of-support radios on the DuPage Emergency Dispatch Intermobile Radio System, and then move to approve JPSR 0362-22, a resolution approving the DuPage County Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management's execution of an integral agreement with the Emergency Telephone System Board to provide replacement radios for end-of-life end-of-support radios on the DuPage Emergency Dispatch Intermobile Radio System.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve these items. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan, member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy, member Salman, member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert, member Desart, member DeCiani, member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart, member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
And member Phillips.
Thank you, member Pachowski.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I would move to combine agenda items D, E, F, and G under JPS's. These are all approval of contracts.
Right, there's a motion and a second to combine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's or items are confirmed?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Move to approve JPSP-0253-22, recommendation for the approval of contract purchase order to Midwest Office Interiors, Inc. for the purchase of replacement chairs for courtroom benches and other areas of courtroom for a total amount of $67,525.79. Move to approve JPSP-0254-22, recommendation for the approval of a contract purchase order to Insight Public Sector, Inc. for the purchase of laptops, desktops, and UPS per cooperative purchase agreement pricing for the sheriff's office for a contract not to exceed $257,967.57. Move to approve JPSP-0256-22, recommendation approval of contract purchase order to Centel Solutions for the purchase of port net equipment and services for the sheriff's office for a contract amount not to exceed $393,446.20. And finally, move to approve JPSP-0257-22, recommendation approval of contract purchase order to Alliance Technologies Group, LLC for the purchase of CPU chassis, servers, software, and warranties for the sheriff's office for a contract total amount not to exceed $469,920.77.
Leave us granted. Thank you, member Pachowski.
Thank you.
Um, next up is legislative. A member Desart is absent, so let's go ahead and move to our next order of business, Public Works, and to member Ozog, please.
Thank you. Uh, I move for approval of FMR 0365-22, recommendation for the approval of an agreement between the county of DuPage, Illinois and Family Shelter Services for lease of space at the Henry J. Hyde Judicial Office Facility for facilities management for the four-year period December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2026 for an annual amount not to exceed $1.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Salman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart, member DeCiani, member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
And member LaPlante.
Aye.
All right, thank you, member Ozog. Next up is Stormwater and member Zay.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on SMR 347-22, recommendation of approval of an interregional agreement between the county of DuPage and the village of Carroll Stream for Mitchell Lakes Outfall Project, amount of $250,000 ARPA item.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart, member DeCiani, member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Salman.
Aye.
And member Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, members Zay.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on SMR 348-22, interregional agreement between the county of DuPage and the village of Glendale Heights for James Court and Pearl Avenue Drainage Project, amount not to exceed $252,419,000 ARPA item. Nope, roll call.
Yeah, we gotta do, as some, we had some people leave, so we have a motion and someone can just say second for the record. Someone second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Pierce, please call the roll for us.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart, member DeCiani, member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Salman.
Aye.
And member Tornatori.
Aye.
Thank you, members Zay.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on SMR 349-22, recommendation interregional agreement between the county of DuPage and the village of Itasca for road joy infrastructure improvement phase two, amount not to exceed $500,000 ARPA item.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on SMP 252-22, recommendation movement into a contract with Altoffer Industries to furnish and deliver one Caterpillar compact track, track loader, amount not to exceed $49,050.
Leave is granted.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Ma'am chair, I move to waive first reading on SMO 0047-22. This was passed in, tax amendment was passed in Stormwater Committee.
Do we have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I move on SMO 47-22, recommendation for the committee to approve tax amendments to Chapter 15 of the DuPage County Code, DuPage County, countywide stormwater and floodplain ordinance.
Leave is granted. Thank you, members Zay. Next up is Technology Committee and my vice chair, Mayor Hart, please.
Thank you, member Salman. I move on TEP 260-22, recommendation for the approval of a contract to Environmental Systems Research Institute, ESRI, for the procurement of ARC GIS velocity application licensing for a total amount of $51,464.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Salman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart, member DeCiani, member Ekoff.
Aye.
And member Garcia.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Member Hart?
Thank you, member Salman. I move on TECO 0020-22, amendment to county, amendment to a county contract issued to Ruskuska and Sons Doing Businesses while he's printing to furnish and deliver printed business envelopes for DuPage County departments to increase the contract amount by $8,163.05.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Salman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart, member DeCiani, member Ekoff.
Aye.
And member Garcia.
All right, passes, member Zay. Oh, Hart, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and lastly, I move an item seeking authorization to travel for a GIS staff member to attend and present at the annual Illinois GIS Association Conference in Bloomington, Illinois for approximate cost of $770.
Leave is granted. Thank you, member Hart. Next up, transportation and member Pachowski, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'd move to approve DTR 0350-22, a resolution of concurrence with the Federal Highway Administration's determination of no adverse impact, the Illinois Prairie Path and the Great Western Trail as part of the Village of Villa Park Tri Trail Construction Project.
Oh, there was a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member, member Pachowski.
Aye.
Member Renahan, member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy.
Aye.
Member Salman.
Aye.
Member Tornatori.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart, member DeCiani, member Ekoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Krajewski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
And member Phillips.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Move to approve DTR 0353-22, an interregional agreement between the county of DuPage and the village of Bloomingdale for sidewalk improvements along Army Trail Road, no county cost.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTR 0354-22, an integral agreement between the county of DuPage, Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements along Route 28 Gary Evo, estimated county cost $28,061.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTR 0356-22, an awarding resolution to Shore Asphalt Services, Inc. for the Downers Grove Township 2022 Road Maintenance Program for a estimated township cost of $778,484.23 per low bread.
Leave is granted.
Ma'am chair, I would move to discharge the Transportation Committee for agenda items E, F, and G.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Discharge passes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am chair. Move to approve DTP 0258-22, recommendation for approval of contract to Complete Fleet Services, Inc. for on-call repair service and on-call repair parts for diesel trucks and plows as needed for the Department of Transportation for a contract not to exceed $30,000.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTP 0259-22, recommendation approval of contract to Kevin's Auto and Diesel Repair for on-call service, repair service and repair parts for trucks and plows as needed for the Department of Transportation for a contract not to exceed $70,000.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve DTCO-0021-22, amendment to a resolution issued to Lakeside International, LLC to increase the funding, the amount of $70,000 resulting amended contract to $108,000, increase of 63, 64%.
Leave is granted.
Move to approve amendment to DTR 0109B-22, amendment to a resolution to the local agency agreement between the county of Page and Illinois Department of Transportation for improvements to Warrenville Road over the east branch of DuPage River, federal share, the increase, federal shares $56,188.
Leave is granted.
And lastly, authorization for overnight travel for our Director of Transportation, County Engineer Travel to beautiful East Peoria, Illinois for October 5th through October 7th to attend a 2022 Fall Conference for the Illinois Association of County Engineers. Expenses to include registration, lodging, mileage, and estimated county cost of $782.50.
All right. Is there a request for leave?
Yes.
Right, leave is granted. Thank you, member Pachowski.
Thank you, ma'am chair.
Next up is discussion. We've seen this item, PA 990646, Pension Obligation Projections Required by Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act. Is anyone seeking recognition on this item? Seeing none. Moving on to old business. Is anyone seeking recognition on old business? All right, I have member Garcia and then member Ozog.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sullivan. Was gonna say this in, uh, the old business of finance, but we were going so long, so I'm gonna bring it up here. I, I was really concerned to hear about all the security issues happening in the clerk's office. That's very concerning to me. And I did go to Keith Briggs' security webinar, or his discussion that he gave for all the staff. I did that last week and I have to give kudos to Keith Briggs on that. It was very, very informative and I appreciate that so much. The one thing that I'm concerned about is that there was a comment made during the last finance meeting about, um, there is three, there's three departments that are, there's all departments in the county, I'm gonna say, are very, very important. I'm just gonna say that. But in terms of the sheriff department, the state's attorney department, they did realize that they're getting into, that they're getting into a business that is dealing with people who may be dangerous. The clerk's office is not the same way, and due to misinformation, they've become the same way. I am concerned that in, in this building itself, in 421, there are no like metal detectors as you walk into the main entrance or anything to protect the staff here. And I think that's something that, that should be concerned in a facility plan in the near future. I wanna bring that up to everybody, so I, I really do think that's something that needs to be brought up, because that wasn't brought up during the security discussion that, uh, Mr. Briggs had last week. So I really think that that is something that needs to be discussed and I wanna make sure that we're keeping all of our employees safe. Thank you.
Thank you, member Garcia. Um, I do know the last time there was a discussion, it's always a cost thing, but I agree that maybe we should have that brought back up, so we'll kinda put that on the list for senior staff that the next time it's time for Keith to come back, he can address that. All right, thank you. Next up, member Ozog, please.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank the board for your support a couple of months ago, joining the coalition against the Canadian Pacific-Kansas City Railroad merger. I was there last night at the Surface Transportation Board public meeting. There were several hundred people at the Weston, Itasca. There were presenters, citizens, first responders, fire and police. Congressman Krishnamoorthy came, and also, uh, Surface Transportation Board Chairman, Marty Oberman, who has been the Metro Chairman in the past. It was an amazing presentation, especially the first responders. When they talk about the traffic impacts, Chris Snyder, our own Chris Snyder, did a great presentation showing how much railroad gate downtime would increase if this merger goes through. I personally spoke about the metro impact, but also, uh, I've been in my home for many, many years, but back in 1996, the Chicago Northwestern was purchased by the Union Pacific and the rail traffic increased exponentially. And downtown Glen Ellen experiences all of these situations, blocked gates, um, noise, parked trains, et cetera. So I spoke to that. But this is a really important issue, because they're claiming that they're going to put eight to 14 trains extra on these lines. And I frankly, from my own experience, know that it's probably gonna end up being quite a bit more. This line goes from Canada all the way through the United States to Mexico, and it's going to be a major impact, especially on our northern DuPage community. So, uh, there is an, you can look at the Surface Transportation Board section about this. There's going to be another, uh, virtual public meeting, so if you wanted to put some commentary on there. But we really need to stay on this. Uh, the decision has not been made, and I have to thank, uh, Mr. Oberman, who was there for the entire three and a half hour meeting. And I really appreciate that he was there, and I really, I think that's a real advantage to us, that he is a local person and knows the impact that this very well could have. My personal opinion, I think our entire region is really saturated at this point. So to increase rail traffic anywhere is, especially when it's not necessary, and I believe this is really about, uh, a corporate situation where it would be efficiencies of scale, et cetera, but this is really going to impact our residents, and I think we really need to stay on it. Thank you.
Thank you, member Ozog. Next up, member Zay.
Thank you, ma'am chair. You know, we've had discussions the last several months, and I'm concerned about a double standard we see on this board. GPS meeting the other day, member Desart brought up an investigation of the, of the sheriff, even though the undersheriff and Chief Thorpe were here, and then was followed up by a letter from the sheriff explaining it. Member Desart, Desart still said there was an investigation, I'm, I feel bad she's not here today, but still said there was investigation basically that our sheriff had lied to them. I don't know of any special authority we have to investigate anybody, I don't think we do. But again, throwing these inflammatory words around like investigate are out there to get political points. The meeting before, member Ozog had brought up the Milton Township Highway Commissioner and how he's being non-responsive, even though he had dealt with the, with the concern on, on, uh, in Milton Township. He had sent me a video of the, of the area on Sunday after the massive rain, and our stormwater staff and his staff had already dealt with it, and that resident still has not responded to the county after a month and a half of being told what to do on that. Three months ago, member Chaplin basically said there was a cover-up by our senior staff when it came to the missing $4 million, or not missing, but not, uh, not sent to the state, but nobody could provide any information from the clerk's office if anybody sent it, didn't send it, sent it by real, real mail, certified, emailed, nothing. But again, we have no problems going after that. But when certain board members ask for just certain things from the clerk, just normal things, not calling it a cover-up, an investigation, non-responsive, just saying, you know, we'd like some background information, or we'd like some more information, or anything, please come talk to us at a board meeting, that the chairman and the vice chair had said, please come to attend, we get nothing, but they defended there. So you can't have it both ways. I mean, my suggestion to our elected officials, we don't come anymore, because there's no consequences. When they do come and they sit there and the sheriff comes and does their budget and they talk about and they defend it, or the state's attorney, or the cert court clerk, they come and they defend it, any questions we have. But when we ask for just normal standard and then their office has the audacity to say, well, we wanna combine the, the budgets because it's more transparent, that's a joke. So don't have it both ways. Don't go after other elected officials because of party affiliation or whatever, or quick political points, but then don't go after somebody else who's obviously not doing their job at that point. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. I see member Ozog and then member Tornatori, oh, oh, sorry, Chaplin before Tornatori.
Thank you. November 8th is eight weeks away and it can't come soon enough. Enough of this. I have helped a constituent who reached out because she has been trying to get her six sump pumps hooked up to her storm system for over eight months. She has not responded because she is waiting for an engineer report about how to do this. That's gonna cost her $3,000. Now she's already probably into this for $10,000 or $15,000, and she still has no guarantee that she's going to be able to do this. So the frustration this person is having, even though four of her neighbors have this hookup, uh, you know, this is my township too, and if I choose to get involved, it's not about politics, it's about helping a constituent. So enough of this. And I'm going to be there tonight as well. And if Mr. Castle, who came here two weeks ago, doesn't like that, sorry. But this woman has been given a runaround for weeks and months, and all she wants is to have guarantees that her sump pumps can go into the storm draw. You should go see it. If you're that, you, you don't believe it, six sump pumps, less than 10 feet away from where she works every day. And this is what, how she's treated. You know, Mr. Milfeldt doesn't respond to her except through his attorney. That's your tax dollars that are being spent for that kind of rigmarole. So don't tell me that she hasn't responded. She's told them that she has not had her report from her engineer, which she has to hire. And then she's gonna have to give another $1,000 to Milton Township for their engineering of this. So I'm sorry, this is a really pretty easy issue that could have been solved many months ago. When I first saw this woman and went to her house, there was snow on the ground, and on and on we go. So it'd be nice if this could be taken care of before the fall, or before the winter. But again, eight weeks, enough of this sniping and attacking. Thank you.
Yes. Chaplin?
Thank you, member Salman. So, oh, I don't know how long it's been, um, but I've been in a lot of email conversations, emails going back and forth with the state's attorney's office, with finance. We've been working on this issue with the clerk for a while, right? We've been trying to get information. I've been trying to do my due diligence as an elected official. What it comes down to is statutorily, we have, we don't have the right to ask for some of these things that we're asking for. Now, the other, just like the salary, um, uh, what do you call those, comparisons, right? I don't believe that we, we can't, we don't set the salaries in those offices. We give them the money and we trust that they are going to do with that money the right